December 16th, 2021, this is the Cushinget Planning Board. Does the motion open the meeting?
Make a motion to open the meeting, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, be kind enough to insert, well, this meeting is the audio and videotape person for Mass General Law. And gentlemen, introduce yourselves, starting with our great planner Doug.
Doug Monta Town Plaid.
Dave DeVigian, member.
Rick Ellis, member.
Brian Dishamps, member.
Mark Sanorizio, member. With that, we start out with new businesses, is that what we have? Or did you gentlemen, let me see here.
Yeah, we have a new business.
We can do the minutes at the end, or you want to do it at the beginning?
Um, I'm okay with that.
Doesn't matter to me.
That's fine.
As long as we get to them.
Okay. With this, new business, you want to start with that one, Doug?
Yeah, we'll do that, and then we can go to the appeal for 301 Perry Hill.
Okay. With that discussion, A and R Plan, land situated on Perry Hill Road, map nine, portion 18A of Cushinget, Mass, prepared by Frank A. Knox and Karen L. Knox. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Pottingsway Building, 130 Main Street, first floor. Is there anybody here for the Knoxes on Perry Hill?
Good evening, Matt Leoni with Schneider DeVigian.
It's Chairman Mr. Flot for potential.
Yes, sir. I probably didn't have to do this table, but you're so busy. Couldn't happen at better times.
Good evening, Matt Leoni with Schneider DeVigian of Leoni here tonight to represent Karen and Frank Knox with a division plan on the south side of Perry Hill Road, just east of Mendel. This is a portion of property that they purchased from Russ DuBois just before Thanksgiving. The perimeter that you see here was approved, I believe, in October, at the October meeting. And the intent of the plan tonight is to divide the lot into one conventional lot and two retreat lots that will be serviced by a common driveway. I've got an overview plan here, just to give you an idea of how the map's build-out of the plan would look. I put on a couple conceptual buildings. They're rather large houses, 66 by 88, just to show you what the layout would look like and as it would fit into the neighborhood. As you can see up top here, these are the current home and under construction for Frank and Karen Knox. And down here, I put down another house that's currently being permitted that will be accessed by Mendel Road, separate project. The complete perimeter is about 15 and a half acres with five and three-quarter acres of contiguous upland up in the building area. Switch over to our vision plan. First lot, Lot 8A, is 6.4 acres approximately and has a 153, almost 154 feet of frontage on Perry Hill Road. As you can see, we have the 150 lot width and lot depth box in the front, and the lot will maintain the 80-foot width throughout its length until it gets to the building portion of the lot. The contiguous building area is 55,900 square feet requirement for a conventional lot, and the Residence A District is 40,000 square feet of contiguous upland. Both retreat lots, 8A and, excuse me, 8B and 8C, have over 80 feet of frontage. Requirement is 40 for a retreat lot, and they will both maintain over the minimum 35 feet of width throughout the access strip area. Lot 8B has a contiguous upland area of just under 106,000 square feet, and Retreat Lot 8C has 88,000 square feet of contiguous area, excuse me, contiguous upland area. And both lots will well exceed the minimum 120,000 square foot total lot requirement, with 8B being 4.9 acres and 8C being 4.15 acres. As I said before, the lots will be accessed by a common driveway. We have basically 13, excuse me, 1300 square, 1300-long common driveway. Starts off at 30 feet wide, excuse me, it's not the common driveway, but the common driveway easement, which is 30 feet wide, up towards, goes through the wetland crossing, and shrinks down to 20, and then back up to 30 feet wide for the turnaround, provide vehicular access and turnaround. The wetland crossing will require permitting through the Conservation Commission, and once the driveway design is vetted through the Conservation Commission and we've done our design, we'll be back here with a special permit request for the common driveway. I have on the plan here a note specifically stating that a special permit from the Town of Cushinget Planning Board will be required for the use of the common driveway for the lots 8A, 8B, and 8C.
The other house off of that property, is there, that you showed on the first plan turnaround, is supposed to be accessed via another pathway? Is there a building permit issued for that house yet?
I know that they're under permitting right now. I'm not sure if there's been a building permit issued.
Okay. Is it an existing dwelling, or is it?
No, it's a vacant lot. It was a, it's a retreat lot with a retreat lot access off of Mendel. So it really has nothing to do with the development that we're speaking with tonight. I just wanted to show it for reference, for the, you know, kind of the build-out of the neighborhood, give you an idea of what it would look like if there was other three houses put back there.
So you just, you're breaking all that up, and you're going to come back in for a permit for the common driveway, correct?
That's, that's correct, yeah. The idea is to make sure that we meet the dimensional requirements, and then we will have to come back for a special permit. So the driveway, once we do the design and test bits, everything else, and go through conservation, we'll be back here for review of comment, a special permit from the planning board.
I mean, it seems to meet the dimensional requirements. The, I mean, it may be not quite so easy to get the wetlands permits and the common driveway special permit. That requires notice for the abutters typically. We have considerable input from the abutters on these common driveway things.
Yep.
I believe we're, we've got an appeal on one that we've issued already. I just.
Beware.
I'm sure, I'm sure he knows, I'm sure he knows the routine, but just make sure Frank and Karen know what they're getting into in terms of permitting, that's all.
Yeah, I think they know it's a long road, and that's why we're taking it step by step.
Gentlemen, Brian, anything? Doug? Is there a motion?
I, just, just as a, a comment, I don't think this is the time to, to address it, but at some point, considering the, the last several proposals we've had, we're going to have to really take a hard look at there being access on the street for each of these lots. I mean, that's a condition of a Form A permit, of when we, when we issue a Form A approval, implicit in that approval is access to the road. And, you know, it's, there's a couple of court cases relative to that. One of them is a very simple one-lot thing where courts have said, you know, just because there's wetlands in the way doesn't mean that you don't have access. But there's also another case where the court ruled that wetlands in the way did prohibit, did essentially prohibit practical access to the lot and upheld the denial of it. I'm not going to make an issue of it on this, on this particular proposal, but I, I think we're, the board is going to have to have a discussion as to how hard we want to look at actual access to the road for each Form A lot that, that we approve. That's all. That's just a comment. I mean, at this particular one, I don't have a problem approving the Form A lot, lots as shown, but the next time you come in with one, it may not be so easy. That's what I'm trying to say.
When you say Form A, you mean the conventional lot versus the retreat lot?
A Form, a Form, a Form A approval on any lot implies access to the road. And if you were to try and, and I just outlined, I don't have the, the actual cases with the court numbers and all that stuff, but those are the two. We went through this on Peckham Road. We had lawyers from both sides, on, from the town, Copelman and Page, and from the applicant, and it, both parties admitted that the current court findings could or could not apply to approval of Form As on that, on that particular site. There's the same question on this one.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's one way of going about it in the future would be to get conservation approval prior, but it's a lot of investment to get it on there.
I, I understand. I do understand. This also puts pressure on conservation to look, to look at the things where they may, for three lots, I don't know. It's a, I don't want to put this, it may not be so easy next time.
Okay.
Okay. Particularly, I've, you know, we've got discussion right now on an appeal to one very similar proposal that we approved off of Peckham Road that's gone into appeal. So, you know, I'm not anxious to bring the town into litigation. It's expensive on the town's behalf, and these types of developments leave the door wide open to litigation from the abutters. That's all. Just, just comments. That, that aside, I mean, I would make a motion that we approve the Form A plan as submitted, and with the proponent being forewarned that it may be more difficult in the future to get a, a development like this approved and that he may have trouble with the special permit on, on this one. You know, again, look, just based on previous history on previous plots, and I, for one, am not anxious to keep pulling the town into litigation. I mean, these, these hours with Copelman and Page are extremely expensive, but that's my motion to approve the plan as submitted.
And do you see anything, I know you were talking more about abutter issues, but when we do come back with a special permit, if we do come back with a special permit, do you see any issues?
I have no idea. I mean, you know, you, you'll have to send out the green cards, and we'll see what happens and who comes in the door.
Okay.
So with these, it's just, this is, they'll land 40-foot frontage on the retreat lots, all the way back legal, there were 40, 40, and 40, correct?
Yeah, he's got 80. He's got 80, 80 at the front and, and a minimum of 40 all the way back to all the other ones. I mean, meets, it meets all the dimensional requirements.
Yeah.
Like, and, and again, it's just commentary on my part. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how willing I'm going to be to continue to expose the town to litigation, you know, on these types of developments, that's all.
Gotcha. So that's the motion you approved with those stipulations?
No, there's no stipulations, really. I mean, it either meets the requirements or it doesn't, and, and it does.
That motion, is there a second?
I second.
Are you going to say anything? You okay with it?
Yep.
Fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Do you have a mile hour with you?
It's right here.
Also evidently, as of January 1st, we're going to be getting a new building commissioner. He may have a different view on the zoning requirements for a building permit than the board does. Or the current, or the current building commissioner does.
You have a different interpretation of the bylaws?
What's that?
You mean a different interpretation of the bylaws?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is that a pen? You want a pen instead of?
No, I, this one's.
I already signed up. I, I already signed.
There has been considerable back and forth with the current building commissioner about zoning requirements for retreat lots and the common driveways, setbacks from common driveways, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, thinking about doing a revamp on the, on the bylaws.
Don't know. Maybe we could eliminate retreat lots altogether. That would, that would make my life easier here on the board.
You think there's something to do with that?
Absolutely.
Yep. You have to be ready to admit you made a mistake, right?
Thank you.
Do you mind if I bring the next people up?
You want to do 301 Perry Hill?
You want to do that next?
Yes, if you guys don't mind.
A little bit?
No, that's okay. It's your.
Ted, you not getting sleepy?
Okay.
Okay. Cause I am.
You are.
Young guy like you.
What is that, less than seven decades old? Is that it? Is that, is that a young guy?
Do you tell 301 Perry Hill to come in, please?
301 Perry Hill.
Why are we, why are we here talking about this again?
The easement and the homeowners trust agreement.
Okay, let me read into it.
So this is just, this is not an appeal to the, is this an appeal that we're dealing with?
No, it's just more, I mean, appeal was placed on file with the court, yes.
They were?
Yes.
Who placed the appeal?
Why don't I do it this way, Victor?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Appeal discussion, 301 Perry Hill Road, Form C subdivision for a four lot development at 301 Perry Hill Road for our applicant, Schneider DeVigian and Leoni Incorporated, Mataportus, Mass. This plan is located on an established agent way which predates subdivision control regulations. With that, there was an appeal made on this?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, on, on the easement and the homeowners trust agreement.
Okay. Now, I don't think we've had an appeal in a while, so is there some stipulations that we go through, or do the neighbors have to go with each other?
It goes to the court, it goes to the court next, doesn't it?
Yeah, no, I, I contacted the town council already.
Yep.
With the town minister's approval, so we're still waiting to hear back on that.
I mean, if, and the appeal is with the court.
Yeah.
So, you know, the board doesn't really have any, any input at this point. I mean, the court has got to make a decision based on arguments from the town, the town's lawyers and their lawyers.
Yep.
That it was either done properly or not. I just, I, I know, I'm just, that's, that's my understanding of the, of the situation.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, then, you know, we're, we're not going to change it right now.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, it's got to go to court.
Okay.
You focused on the statement?
I think that, I think that's the procedure, right? I mean, we can't bypass the court proceeding by anything that we do here.
No, absolutely not.
This is given to town council?
Yes.
And town council has not made a determination yet?
No, not yet.
Okay. So I guess our hand's actually tied.
I would make a motion that we pause on the issue until we hear from town council.
Okay. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, I wish we could discuss it, folks, but it's in the lawyer's hands. We have absolutely nothing to do with it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Have a great Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. That's today's 16th, right? With that, we'll go move on to our next one, which is 0195, 165 Nize Lane, continuation of public hearing, solar ray installation, assesses map 18, Lot 57 and 57A, Cushinget, Mass, proponent R&amp;R Renewables LLC, represented by Henderson Consulting Services. Send letters to abutters in public hearing, public posting. The plans and accompanying documentations are available for inspection at town clerk's office, Pottingsway Building, 130 Main Street, first floor. If you'd be kind enough to come in and tell us, we know who that handsome face is, but tell the people.
Thank you very much. You're very kind, Mr. Chairman. My name's Robert Nacer. I'm here representing R&amp;R Renewables. My partner, Roy Morrison, is here this evening as well. And then Mr. Chopper, Mr. Chopper are here as well, who are the, the property owners. I guess this evening, and what I'd like to do is start by giving the board an update since our last meeting, what has happened. And essentially, our engineer has been resolving the issues that S.W. Cole, you know, the design issues with S.W. Cole. They've gone back a couple of times. There's a few, I'm going to call them like technical, small details that they have to work on. I was hoping they would be, I'd be able to say it's all settled tonight, but it's not. So I'm going to let them just finalize that between the two of them. But substantially, the plan is not going to change. I've submitted the decommissioning proposal to the, to the board. Doug has a copy of that. It's also with S.W. Cole. I haven't heard anything about their review. That is complete. I have a copy of that here. If anybody at the board wants to take a look at that and review that, well, I'm here. That's a copy of that. We've also been asked to put together a stormwater operation and management plan and a maintenance cost schedule, which we've done, and that's with, that's been submitted to S.W. Cole. It also went over to the Conservation Commission as well. The last substantial issue, I'm, I'm going to say, at least in my opinion, is the evergreen screen. I think the last meeting, we left and you asked me to put together a proposed evergreen screen plan, and I have that this evening. I have a small copy that I can leave for you, you can look at here, but I also have a large copy. I didn't bring a copy for everybody here, I'm sorry about that. But I'll do my best to explain what we came up with for a proposal. Can you just move this out a little bit more so that everybody can see here? So what we, after our last meeting, we gave this to our landscape architect, architect, and really I gave him the plan. I said, hey, this is what we need to do. We need to screen the west side, we need to screen the south side, and use your architectural design discretion. So this is the plan he came up with. I think it's a, it's a visually appealing plan, and it also meets the planning board requirements. So it's going to meet the deer resistance, the height requirements. Just to be, get into the plan a little bit detailed, there's 54 trees that are proposed here, planting, four different species. There's a holly, there's a white spruce, a white pine, and then an arborvitae. And they're going to be arranged in a semi-random pattern to make it, give it some visual appeal. I guess I've seen too many screens that are just one big monolithic hedge, and to me, that's not appealing. I think he did a nice job in trying to make it the best he could with what's, you know, with what we're dealing with here. And I think this, if my, you know, if there are any questions, the board have questions about this?
Remind me again what the, what the proposal was or what the plan was on the existing trees on the south side of the property?
So there were approximately 12 trees that were going to be taken out of this lot right here, and then we were going to prune along the edge of the line. There was that one big, I think it's the big.
There's one huge tree there.
Yeah. That was the one, I think, when we did the site visit out there, that came up. So that tree is going to be a little bit of a problem, probably. I mean, I don't know how much pruning we'll be able to do there and, you know, keep it. I guess I'm not the arborist, I can't really say, but we'll have to see. But there's probably, yeah, maybe a dozen trees, different size in the, in the field.
So the, the plan really is you want to take the trees, the existing trees down on the west side of the, on the south side of the property? Is that?
That's true, yes.
Okay.
Any trees that shake the array, that would be correct.
How, what's the on-center spacing of those, those trees and those evergreens that you're planting on?
They are, that's a good question. I think he gave me a plan. I believe that they're, they're six feet on center from each other.
And what size are the, of trees or?
So he's proposed six to seven foot for the spruce, the white pine, and the arborvitae, and then the holly was a five to six-foot tree.
I mean, those are substantial. We're dealing with another proponent right now that proposed four-foot-high arborvitae at a certain spacing. They doubled the spacing and cut them down to two feet high. So I, you know, we will, if you put it on the plan, we're, we're going to expect that it gets done that way.
That's fine.
I mean, that, that current, that current development is under a cease and desist from us.
I saw that on the, on the agenda this evening, so, yeah, I did see that.
So if you're, if you're promising it, you need to be prepared to come through with, with the promise.
Absolutely.
I mean, seven, six to, five to seven-foot specimens, six feet apart is more than adequate as, if that is the proposal.
I believe this gentleman would like to speak here.
Yeah, just one of, just.
Introduce yourself, sir.
About the trees that.
Just introduce yourself, sir.
Roy Morrison, I'm the, I'm also one of the partners in. Each of those trees grows at a different rate, so it'll have a natural look. So the arborvitae grows very fast, the white spruce grows very slow, the, the pine is a little faster, and, and the little one grows fairly fast. So that there's going to be, you know, when you look at it, it will look like it's a natural, as opposed to a prison hedge.
Like a forest.
I understand. I understand what you're saying.
I don't think they're six feet on center.
No, I don't think so either.
Because that's a, this is a twin scale drawing, and they might be six feet on this little tiny sheet, which is reduced by 70%. I just want to point that out, I don't.
I, I don't know. I guess I'd have to look, go back and look at my notes. He didn't put it on the sheet here, and I will, let me see if it's in.
Eyeballing it from scale, maybe, maybe 12 to 15, but there's.
I don't think they're that far apart, but I, I mean, I can clarify that.
You're going to end up having to come back anyway.
Yeah.
Because, because the engineering review isn't done yet.
Right.
I would say, let's, let's get it finalized and tell us what you want to promise first before. I mean, right now, I, there's a big difference whether it's 12. I mean, right now, I, there's a big difference whether it's twelve feet or six feet on center, you know, and again, there's the, the size of the trees. I don't think anybody's, I'm not a real fan of white pines myself, but that's...
I mean, I guess everybody has, you know, I guess that's a, a personal preference, right? I guess if they...
They don't really, unless you, unless you actually get there and shear them back, they're not a very dense tree.
Right.
They're pretty spindly and, and especially as they get older.
Well, I mean, I guess I was hoping that maybe...
I've got, I've got dozens of them in my backyard. You're, you can have them all for free.
All right. We'll take care of that then. We'll be over. How's that? Are they five to six feet, or six to seven feet?
A lot of them are, yeah, yeah. I mean, if you put them like a foot and a half apart, they make a pretty dense screen too, but...
Yeah.
They, they do get kind of spindly as they get older.
Yeah.
But anyway, why didn't you finalize that? Come up with, tell us...
Are you talking the south side or the, or the left side? All the way around?
Yes.
Well, the west end and south. I mean, they look, it looks like it's...
They're mixed in, like clumps of five, seven, and they, they change. So there's no concern on the north side at all? I missed the first...
That was not requested. They said west and south were the, were the areas that were asked to be screened.
That's where we had a butter comment from, and that's where you can, that's the primary area you can see it from the street, so.
So the west side and the south side will be six feet apart? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I, I don't know. I was, I was presuming, you know, I think one thing that, that I don't know what this scale is between the tree, the center tree here, but the scale of the tree is to the scale of the array. So, you know, I think it gives you the proportion there, so that, that's, but I'll, I'll clarify that at the next meeting.
What's going to happen is when we go out there and look at it after the planting is done, you know, we're, we're going to count trees. Somebody's, whether it's us or the building commissioner or the, the planner, we're going, we're going to count them.
Yeah.
And, and we're going to be looking for a certain spacing, you know, so...
I mean, if we're saying fifty-four trees, they will be fifty-four trees.
Well, I, and I'm asking you right now, I, I want spacing. That's part of the, that's part of the consideration too. To be quite honest with you, all that distance, fifty-four plants, doesn't sound like a whole awful lot to me, but that's a...
I'll get the spacing then.
Okay, please.
And we'll go according, so we'll go on that accordingly.
Gentlemen, David, Brian, anything?
No decisions to make right yet. We don't have the, I would make a motion that we continue the hearing to our next meeting. Hopefully, S.W. Cole...
I was going to ask the public if they'd like to say anything while they're here.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, okay, I'll hold the motion until...
If there's anybody out in the public that would like to say anything, I mean, it's the holiday season, Merry Christmas.
I just, Mike Chopper, one thing I mentioned in the last meeting about those lower-profile solar panels, you know, I know they're at Hetland, they're across from Knowles in Wareham, across from the old AT&amp;T building at the Haven, they're, they're not ten feet in the air. I don't know if you guys ever looked at them and...
Well, I mean, right now, he's proposing a certain panel, you know, and, and we've got to work with that, you know, unless he wants to, and we're approaching the screening based on, you know, the taller panels, so...
Right.
I mean, that, that is his decision as to how high the panels he wants to put in, and it's our decision how much screening we want to have put in. So more higher panels, more trees. Higher berms.
Anybody else, please?
There's going to be a berm too?
Don't, I, I don't remember on this one. We've had so many different proposals.
We did talk about a berm.
Yeah, we did.
When I left here at the end of the meeting, I, my understanding was that it had to be at least six feet, and whether I did it with a berm or without a berm was up to me to decide that. That's what I, that was the, that was the directive I had at the end of the meeting.
I mean, if you want to do it with plants, that's fine too, just, but we will need a spacing on those.
Sure, I could, I'll get the spacing. That's no problem. I mean, do you, I mean, I guess since this is an issue, are you looking for a minimum spacing, or is it just going to be, I propose the spacing, and if you could like it or you don't like it, I guess I'm just trying to, so we don't have to go through this again?
Well, I mean...
I mean, is there, is there a planning board standard for this, or...
There is not.
There is not?
There is not.
Okay, so it's a discretionary item for you folks?
Depending on the size of the project, the location, the surrounding topography, the surrounding vegetation, I mean, there's a lot of things to, to consider. But certainly, a, a tree every twelve feet is probably not going to do it.
Okay, well...
I mean, that's not going to provide much initial visual relief.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's, that would be good to know, so that, you know, for next time, I guess. I'll, I'll know that for next time.
Could your landscape designer give us a rendering from the street of what it's anticipated to look like? I don't, because you have...
Yeah, I mean, those are just, those are just obviously stock photos. I mean, I'm not sure what a rendering, how much value that's going to be, because they're going to be, when you plant a five or six to seven-foot tree, it's not, and where the, especially the perspective from the tree, from the street, I mean, I can ask them. I don't, I'm not sure there's that much value to it, to be honest with you. That would be my opinion, because...
Okay.
If you had a building where you show a rendering, I think this value, when you show landscaping, it's going to change over time. I mean, the first couple of years, it's not going to screen the whole thing. That's clear, I think, even with what we're proposing here. It is going to take time, and, you know, I think over, hopefully within three to five years, is a substantial hedge there that's going to provide, you know, everybody with, with more screening. And, you know, one, I know one item that you did ask, when do we want to trim these back? And I think I was going to propose that we would trim them back when they get to the height of the trailing edge of the solar panels. That would be, you know, ten and a half feet is approximately where we would trim them back. Or if they, you know, or we could let them go until they shade the solar panels. That would be the other, you know, but not less than ten and a half feet.
Yeah, I mean, there's a fair distance from the solar panels now, the way the, the plan shows, so...
Yeah, I don't think...
It shouldn't be a, a critical thing in...
No, I don't think so either, and I gave them, you know, that was one of the issues. I said, we want, we don't want to have shading issues from the, from the hedge too, so push them away from the solar ring.
Hi.
Gentlemen, anything else?
Any other comments from the...
Anybody else? Doug, you got anything on this?
No, just, I think the board judge on the screening was pretty good. I mean, I just was able to read the plans yesterday.
Yeah.
So I think we'll have to go back and work, work further on this together.
Sure. So just a, a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. So if we have a resolution with S.W. Cole on all the engineering issues...
As far as decommissioning, et cetera, et cetera.
And, yeah, decommissioning.
And stormwater.
So who does, who is in charge of the storm, who has to sign off on the stormwater? Is that, is that Pat down in Conservation?
Actually, Conservation's got to sign off on the stormwater permit.
Yeah, so I guess what would be...
Technically, technically, yeah, Pat's the stormwater agent. The stormwater board is the Conservation Commission. And my understanding is technically the stormwater board has to vote to issue the stormwater permit based upon Pat.
Do, uh...
You might want to talk to Pat.
Do we have to have, it's not a stormwater permit that we're asking for, is it?
You have, yes.
It's really, it's part of the special...
No, it says you'll have to get a separate stormwater permit.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to talk to...
It used to be the planning board that had the stormwater authorization.
Yes.
Everything was handed over to Conservation as far as stormwater, no?
Okay, that wasn't, that wasn't crystal clear, but I'll, I'll check with them. I know he's been involved in the, all the correspondence so far, so we should have everything right now, and he should be up to date on the tran, you know, whatever's transpired, but I will talk to him directly.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Folks, anything else?
I just got one quick question.
Your name, please, sir?
My name is Scott. I live on Nysland. My, my question is, is there any stipulation to the tree staying alive? I know it has nothing to do with its nature, but for some reason, if there's some kind of disease that wipes out half the trees on the south side, is there any, like, is it part of the, as long as the permits are there, they have to have shielding or no?
So I know what we're doing at Wing Lane currently is they're going to be posting a bond for the trees in a certain lifetime, so as long as they make it five years, then they can reclaim their bond, but for that meantime...
I mean, that's, that may be what we do here. I mean, generally, after about two years, if, once they root in, they're usually in pretty good shape, but that first two years can be...
Right.
Pretty tough on new plantings.
I'm just saying if something were to happen where, whatever it is, natural disaster or some kind of infection, I mean, I have no idea, but it wipes out half the trees on the south.
First summer, you have no rain.
Yeah, that's, the lack of water is usually the biggest, the biggest issue with, with those things.
If it wipes out half the trees, you know, I'm just wondering if there's any stipulation to that, that's all.
Well, we'll tell them right now. I, I'm in favor of a bond, just like we talked about at Wing Lane, because we have to have, I think, a five-year survival rate is a fair...
Need some kind of protection.
Yep.
Yeah. So if they fail to replant, we have the bond, we can pull it, and we can go replant.
Gotcha. Makes sense.
If there's an action.
I appreciate that.
So, okay, so a bond you're looking for? I'll have to do a schedule cross for replacement of everything, I guess. I don't, I don't know what you, I don't know how you, how you do this. Do you do a percentage of it or declining? I don't know. We're just waiting, whatever you submit something, and then who's going to review it? Is this for you, you folks to review, or...
Yeah, I don't think we need to send it to S.W. Cole.
No.
All right. I'll, I'll come up with something that seems hopefully reasonable to you folks. How's that?
Fortunately or unfortunately, you're, you're in the process, process of us figuring out what to do with all these things.
I did, that was on the agenda.
And we're, we're now, we're now at the stage where we've had a couple of projects actually get developed and, and problems related to that, and they are rolling over to the next development, which is you.
Right, sure. Yeah, I think we had a discussion about that last time, too. We talked about that.
That's been an initial problem in terms of the size and the spacing of plantings. Also, we haven't gotten into the survival rate yet, but anybody who's planted anything in their yard knows that if you don't keep it watered, there's not a chance in, I don't want to pick, not, not a very good chance of them surviving anyway.
Sure, understood.
In that case, I'd make a motion, we continue the hearing, public hearing, to our next meeting.
Do you have a date for our next hearing at all, Doug?
Uh, no, I was going to talk to the board about that when we're spoken on...
Third weekend in January is better.
Third weekend in January, okay. I don't, I don't think we can do that, but let's take a look.
It's first in July.
There won't be a lot of planting going on in the third week of January.
Twentieth of January.
Okay, sounds good.
And that falls right after Conservation meets.
I need a new calendar, but that sounds good to me.
Okay. I may not be able, I don't know. Let's see.
Okay, we've got the Mullins rule on the agenda.
Uh, any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have nothing, gentlemen.
A second, a motion, if there was one, a second.
Motion made in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are unanimous.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you guys.
Same to you.
Have a great time. Maybe you can plant some Christmas trees over there.
Yeah, maybe, why not?
The white pine offer still holds.
I had some great Christmas trees in front of my house, and someone came out of night to the house.
Took them off.
Got all spinnels. They got nervous and let their ass stand on the tree.
With our next one, discussion on cease and desist issued for ground mounted solar array at Wing Lane.
Yep, so...
Is everybody here on that?
Uh, no, I actually got a call from the engineer. He's not going to be able to make it, but I also got a call from CVE.
From who?
From CVE. It's the parent company of the whole project. Yeah, but they're, they're not going to be able to make it either. Pretty much, they, I went out to the site to take a look at what they've done, completed in terms of fencing. Everything's up, up to this point, as far as I'm aware. It, it satisfies to a certain point the, the need for the visual barrier at the site, but I mean, it's obviously not as good as it could be if, other thing, if the trees were actually the size they were supposed to be.
Well, then that's, that's an issue. That continues to be an issue. I mean, maybe, maybe they need to just leave what's there and, and double the amount and come in with ones that are, well, we, they were supposed to be four. We've got two, so maybe they should all be six feet high, you know, in between the, the two footers that are spaced apart too widely. You know, I, I don't have much, much sympathy there. I mean, if you promised us some plantings, and we're promising the neighbors some plantings, they should be in there.
Yeah, no, and I've spoken with actually the budding property owner, Ray at Wing Lane, and I know Jim has, Jim, well, I'm sorry, I haven't personally talked to him, but Jim has, and we mentioned the slats that they were going to be putting over there to prevent the visual impact. But if, if the board feels that the visual barrier still isn't, hasn't met the needs, and I understand that, there's also still issues on the stormwater side of things.
Yeah, I mean, to me, on the, on the visual barrier...
Yep.
I mean, either it meets the, what the plan says and what they promised they would do, or they've got to come in here and request relief from it. You know, formally, formally come in and request relief from it. You know, that's, that's my opinion, you know, that's the way I feel about it. You know, these, these things are a substantial impact to the, the view of the town, if you will, and this stuff's supposed to, to help with that. So let's do what you promised, or you're, you're in tough shape. Now, what's, what's the deal on the final, how should I put this? When can they flip the switch and start getting money for electricity that they're generating from it?
Uh, once the cease and desist is removed.
Okay, so at this point, they cannot flip the switch...
No.
And generate electricity there? Okay, all right, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, and not until, and I, I know there's stormwater concerns and stuff we worked out with Pat, so...
I, it's always interesting to know, or it's always good to know what leverage you have. That's all I can say.
Okay.
They have, they have serious issues with the stormwater.
And, and, you know, then that's, that's going to be an issue.
Okay.
You know?
The stormwater man, bringing them back in here for site plan modifications. It's a, I read the letter he gave to me, it's like, holy crap, it's a lot there. They're, they got serious issues.
Come in and, like I said, if, if you have to come in and request an amendment, then, then that's what they've got to do, but I think a cease and desist is going to stay until they correct the problems that, that they've got over there.
Okay.
My, my opinion.
I agree the tree should be for the plan.[1629.43] I think the screening looks good, but we also know it's going to last two to five years. And, you know, they said they'll post a bond for the plantings, that's good.
Yes, they're in the process of that.
But tree shrubs this high, just...
Yeah, no, I...
That's not, that's not four feet.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, they should have gone to Home Depot and raided the place at the end of the fall, because that's, that's what it looks like they did.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the abutters, I mean, the abutters are rightfully so expecting some kind of visual screening.
Yes.
And I don't see how you're going to get it with two-foot-high anything.
Yes.
You know, there's, there needs to be an initial screening and then an understanding of what it's going to develop into. I mean, a lot of, a lot of those plants take 10 to 20 years to mature.
Okay.
You know, which would be just about the time for the panels to come down, I guess. That remains to be seen.
What else you got? What, we got a planner update now?
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Minutes, planner update, yeah.
We'll do minutes first.
Okay.
I got the same minutes twice.
Yeah, it might have been just one of my mistakes, I was throwing the October ones in there right before the meeting, so...
So are we, are we just looking at October?
No, no, sorry.
Is there another second you give me?
Here's the September ones, I'm sorry about that.
So it's October and September?
Yes, do you have both?
Yes.
Okay.
First one, then the other.
Oh, I wasn't here anyway.
There are motions to accept minutes from September 16, 2021. Have you had opportunity to read it, gentlemen?
I say so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Let the record reflect, I abstained, I wasn't there.
Okay, fair enough.
And minutes of October 28, 2021.
We're going to get you to one of these meetings yet, David.
I'm voting on this one.
Accept the minutes on October 28.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, those are both done, I don't know if we need to sign any of you, you can take these, and I think you have to set them, put these in minutes by, or set them on...
Yeah, I have to bring them to the clerk's office.
Okay. And with that, we will hand over the planner update to you, Doug.
All right, first thing I want to go over is the Mullins rule, and talking to Pat about it, talked to Dave a little bit about it. Pretty much what this would be is just a quick bylaw change, and it would be for the structure of the meetings, essentially, so if a board member can't make it, and as long as they review all of the material afterwards, and listen to a recording of the meeting, they're allowed to vote on it with a certified signature by town clerk. And then there's also, they just have, I found a form for it on, from Province Town, looks like something we could utilize at some point, just kind of...
Sounds good, I would say put together the, the article, and hold the hearing and vote on it. I mean, it makes sense, I mean, today, where everything's videotaped, anyway, you know, certainly you can go watch the videotape and get a sense of what everybody, what abutter concerns were, what board concerns were, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
You just got a copy of that when it's all done, put together?
The article.
The Mullins rule, yeah?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Now, how soon do we have to have a public hearing on something that's going to go on the town warrant for springtime?
We have to have two public hearings prior.
Yeah, when, when do we have to have that done by to get it on the warrant for the springtime?
I thought they were going to do it in January, no, they're not going to do it.
No, that got canceled.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, too late, ain't it?
That, that's out of the question, anyway, so...
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to check with the office over there.
Okay, why don't you do that, and just, just keep our timeline in place.
Yeah, two weeks prior to the town meeting.
I don't...
Somewhere in that vicinity.
I'd say check with the town administrator, but there isn't going to be one to check with next year.
Yeah, that's a...
Just check with Pam.
Yeah, yeah, Pam, make sure we're ahead of the...
I think, I think it is two weeks, but it's got to be the second one.
Yep.
And that's two weeks.
Yep, there's a rule, it's typically one year, and then one, one or two meetings, and one just before town, two weeks prior to town meeting, or something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
I don't have anything related.
Next, we have the mechanism for release of decommissioning funds, you had requested me to get some more information on that. I've actually spoke with Kathy about it and looked at some...
Excuse me.
So essentially, it's going to be a board vote, it works very similarly to, like, the decommissioning for a roadway, and how they would get that, that money back. So it'd be a board vote, the board would sign off, all the crime, all the requirements are met, whoever buys and sells is settled, would be, if, if something is sold in the meantime, that would have to get settled between the two parties at that time. So, is there anything more specific you would be looking for?
Is this still, well, Catherine's leaving, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, our next finance person, we'll have to, did you, you come up with something with Catherine now as far as the solar arrays, like, you have to do one, two, three, or it has to go into a bank, it can't be a bond, it can be, has to be cash money?
Um, as far as I know, I know she still has the line of credit, but we haven't been able to set up a time to sit down to arrange that yet.
No problem, I'm just checking.
I mean, ideally, it would be nice to have a form.
Yes.
That, you know, has all the stipulations in it, in terms of the mechanism to post it, whether it be cash, bond, or whatever, a line of credit. So a mechanism of, of securing it, and then we need a method of extracting the money, if need be, to, to take care of the decommissioning. I mean, it also looks like we're going to be looking at a, some kind of bond to cover plantings, same thing, it would be nice to have a, a form for that, that you could just fill in the blank on a, on a cost basis. So we, we need a form for decommissioning, we'll need a form for planting guarantees. And, and maybe there should be something stronger in the special permit about when the developer will be entitled to generate electricity and supply it to the grid.
Okay.
Like, all of, all of the requirements...
Have to be met.
Have to be met.
Get a copy of what Rochester puts together, there's got to be something...
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's got to be a surrounding town that's got...
Rochester's got 10, 12, they have 15, in the last couple of years, they've been barraged, overwhelmed, overrun, they've become experts at how to permit them.
Okay, do they have, do they have a planner in Rochester, or...
They've had, they've had, it's been a revolving door the last few years. Steve Starrett just retired.
Yeah, no, I knew they were looking to hire over the summer, and then they...
I don't know if they did, did they?
It never got reposted, I haven't checked their department website.
Well, see if you can find somebody to, to, to give you the, the package that they've developed for the, the solar arrays, that would be one place to start.
All right, solar bylaw, did what you did, did what you asked me to, in terms of checking to see if any surrounding communities require a connect, a agreement being made with ever source before presenting the plants, the planning board.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, no community does that. Yeah, so I haven't been able to find that.
That would be a good way not to have to act on any of these solar arrays for, for the next five years, probably.
Every time we do it.
Yeah, no, I haven't...
Therefore, the governor's plan would go down that crapper.
Yeah, taking a look at Rochester's and Dartmouth's solar bylaws, I didn't see the language in there, but there is some things that I would like to see that we include for a solar bylaw, in terms of they take heavy, heavy consideration to the visual barrier.
If you, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, if you could make a copy of two or three surrounding towns' solar bylaw.
Okay.
Rochester, Rochester, I mean, I always think of Dartmouth, because they've got a, a big staff there, and they're, they're pretty particular about what they approve, put together, whatever. What was the other one you mentioned?
So this is Rochester's, this is Plymouth, Mass., and this is Dartmouth right here.
Okay.
I think Plymouth would be a lot, too.
Yeah.
This is your copy?
I have, I have it all saved on my computer, actually.
Okay.
There's a controversial one in Kava, where they wanted to put it over Tremor Door, because they approved...
Solar array?
Yeah, they approved steel posts.
Oh, that's the one that you saw on 58?
And then they changed it, they changed it to...
They put pylons in, wooden pylons.
Pressure-treated.
Yeah.
And, yeah, of course, I saw, I read an article about it.
So that's what's going on. I drove by there, and I'm looking, going, what the hell could they possibly be doing with those? Because it looks kind of, looks like somebody putting up a pier out in the water.
Yep.
You know, and you're looking at them, going, what the heck is that? You know, now that he said, now I get it.
Controversial because of the pressure treated.
It looks like pressure treating going into the bogs.
The bogs and the aquifer, that's, I don't know.
All right. Uh, special residential development, I didn't get a chance to take care of that, I'm meeting with John Markey next week, and we're starting to work out language for the bylaw, so once I have that nailed down...
That's the Miller thing?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that should cover it.
One thing, one thing I, I mean, I, I think it's a good place for it, you know, I mean, where there's water, where there's sewer, it's already heavily developed and all that. I would be very interested to see what the, the additional units were versus the land that they proposed to be left undeveloped, the ratio.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. I know I spoke with them about the age, that was a big, big topic, the last thing was the age qualification for that. And I believe they feel comfortable with 50%, if that would satisfy...
That's definitely better than what we were talking about at the meeting.
Better than 10 or 15%?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So that's just a heads up on, on that for now, so. But other than that, that should cover everything. I did get a question about Deep Brook Estates from Margaret Ishihara, the lawyer, they were looking how to get a form from the planning board that the new owners will have the right to release the bond, because they're in the process of selling the property.
Isn't there still litigation with that?
Uh, with...
No, I don't think there's any litigation for Deep Brook, is there?
Not on our, not for...
Not with us, um, between the two people.
Is that a select board?
No, got nothing to do with us, I believe it was Cristal...
The seller and buyer, seller and owner, the prior buyer and the owner, I heard that story, but I don't...
Yep, I, I was under the, they had called and asked for different things, but they still didn't finalize all the litigation.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know what the challenge is with that, none of my business, but if she's looking for stuff, I would ask her next time if they finished all the litigation between the two people.
I mean, it would honestly seem that as long as there's an, an agreement between the buyer and the seller, that the, the buyer will get the rights to get the bond released as part of the sale, that would seem like that would be the end of it.
Is the bond for the construction of the roads and infrastructure?
Yes, for the subdivision.
They can release it and re-up another one, right? I mean, if they need to get it into a different name, is that...
Yeah, I think that, that was, that's, that's the, the idea, because currently, I think the, it's getting transferred with the sale, so is, how do we change, change it over so that the, the new owners will be able to pull the bond when that time's met?
I'm not, I'm confused, I thought the bond was our protection, not theirs.
Yeah, but for a certain period of time, from what I understand.
Don't know how, I don't, I wasn't on the, I didn't vote on that, I don't know how it was written up.
Okay.
That's, that's one, that's one thing with a bond, if nothing, if nothing gets done on the subdivision for five years, and the bond runs for five years, well, then, there's no protection there.
Was that approved, like, how many years ago? It's a while now, isn't it?
Yes.
10, anyway.
2007, oh, I think they had stuff...
No, newer than that, I remember seeing it through the board health office.
I mean, there's been, there's been several, there's, there's been a Deep Brook subdivision on the books for the last 40 or 50 years.
What would you say, 2007?
Uh, no, I think the last plans I had was 2017.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd say so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the current.
But an approval's only good for, is that five years?
The subdivision, I believe it's eight.
Eight, okay.
Well, there's zoning protection, I think that, I think there's zoning protection for a certain amount of time, but I don't think there's a time limit on the actual subdivision. So, I mean, if it goes more than eight years, and lot sizes get doubled, well, then, then you're, then you're screwed.
The last one, eight years ran by after the zoning change, and then it was, what, year nine, they were looking for reapproval of something you couldn't approve, something like that?
Don't, don't remember. Like I said, that's, that's been ongoing for, forever.
Close, you got Doug, happy with everything?